Welcome to the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty P. M. Special CDBG Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comments must relate directly to the agenda item. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. City Manager?
Yes, Sir Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This, uh, the good news is the elevator is fixed in City Hall. Um, the bad news is we didn't get the paperwork we needed today from the state, so we should have it tomorrow. Um, so this hopefully will be our last meeting in this location.
You keep telling me that.
Yes, sir. I sure do. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing on the performance of the city's CBGG program and to provide an opportunity for agencies and organizations seeking funding through the Request for Proposal process to provide a brief presentation on their request. Although presentations are not mandatory to receive funding, staff has encouraged uh, agencies that are applying for funding to attend this meeting and present their request. And with that, we'll turn it over to Terry Franklin, who has a PowerPoint presentation, and then it'll be followed by those that are requesting grants from the CBGG program. Terry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the City Manager stated, this begins our annual process for our CDBG grant program. We're gonna give you an overview of the accomplishments for the last year that we closed out at the end of September, which was your two thousand and twenty-one year. And then we're gonna be hearing from uh, agencies that have applied for funding for next year's funding, two thousand and twenty-three. Oops, that went fast. So a little bit about Neighborhood Services and who we are. We do manage the city's uh, CDBG home and ship grant programs as well as others that may come in uh, throughout the year, such as our American Rescue Plan and our CARES Act dollars. Just our organizational chart. And our mission uh, for community development programs under the CDBG, um, we provide supportive services, maintain economic stability. Our goals and objectives, we want to make sure we have programs that are appropriate to the community's needs. We consider the history, needs, and demographics. We also design programs that address needs related to neighborhood revitalization, housing preservation, and serving the needs of our residents. Our revitalization objectives, we focus on achieving visible results in targeted areas. We also address the needs of neighborhoods such as rehabilitation programs, redevelopment programs, capital improvements, and economic development programs. We focus on preserving, retaining the existing housing stock uh, to sustain improved property values. We focus on a diverse range of programs, from those that serve eligible low-income residents to those that target specific needs. For our housing objectives, we prevent moderately declining neighborhoods through our rehabilitation program. We provide safe and efficient housing for our area residents. We prevent homelessness by partnering with housing developers and partners and providing supportive services. And we partner with other programs for maximum impact. We want to understand the community's needs, so we go through an implementation process. Uh, we look at the conditions and availability of our housing stock. We prepare a consolidated plan, which this year actually starts a new five-year cycle. We conduct surveys in the community and with service providers, and we listen to our residents, community leaders, and others. We put those in goals and objectives. We review them periodically to make sure we're still on track, and we undertake initiatives that are compatible with our mission, and we reject those that are not. We plan for change. We monitor both our met and unmet needs throughout the year. We se- secure support for activities that we want to accomplish. We secure community support. We do that through community meetings and social media. We meet with residents and stakeholders of the communities that our plans will affect. We understand the market conditions, and we make sure that we target uh, the right market and properties. We also evaluate our resources and constraints that come along with most of these grant programs. We make sure that we um, analyze our staffing, and we also consult um, with our contractors and agencies. So for the CDBG program, um, for those um, that are not that familiar, these are federal funds that comes straight from HUD. The funds we're allowed to use up to fifteen percent for public services, and those would be for those agencies that you'll hear from tonight. We can utilize up to twenty percent for the management of the grant, and the seventy percent of the funds must be used for low-income households. The funds are flexible. We can use them for housing, economic development, infrastructure projects, public services, and also revitalization activities. This past year, the city also received um, coronavirus funds through CDBG, so we will highlight that here as well. Um, those were also federal funds. Again, the twenty percent administration, and then these funds were meant to serve uh, those households that have been impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and we provided emergency substancee payments. Our home grant is also an annual grant that we get, that is also federal funds, but these funds come through the Brevard County Home Consortium. So Brevard County uh, Commissioners will allocate those funds to those cities. These funds have a fifteen percent mandatory set aside that for community housing development organizations, which provide affordable housing. Uh, up to ten percent is allowed for administration, and these funds can only be used for housing activities. So you don't get the same flexibility you do with CDBG. So for two thousand and twenty-one overview, um, there is the available revenues that came into the city from these three grants as well as the prior year funds um, that remained unspent at nine-thirty, but were allocated to programs. Then the funds expended last year, uh, you'll see there just over four hundred and ninety-five thousand, which left a balance of six seventy-four-seven. In two thousand and twenty-one, we funded three nonprofit agencies. You'll see their expenditures there. We also funded the Street Improvement Program, which uh, resurfaced eight local residential streets. The carryover funds from last year, this is how they're allocated um, from previous years. We still have these amounts ongoing for those programs, and we're working through uh, finalizing their expenditures. So for two thousand and twenty-one, we'll highlight a few of our programs here. Our Housing Rehab Program, which provides those home repairs for low-income households. We did assist three households last year, spending a little over a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We assisted two families to purchase their first home. We assisted just shy of two thousand people with um, various social and human services. And again, we resurfaced eight existing roads totaling one point six miles. And we assisted fifty-nine people with emergency payments for rent utilities and mortgages. That's the end of our two thousand and twenty-one um, performance report. If there's any questions at this time, and if not, we will move on to the second half.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stokoe.
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stokoe.
Thank you.
Um, Terry, could you touch on, I think you said we have prior year funds of a little over seven hundred thousand? Have we not spent those yet, or are we looking to allocate those, or what's the plan for that?
So those funds have been allocated.
Okay.
We have, I'm sure, spent more than that since October first. Um, but just to give you an outline of what that um, consists of, let me find what page that was on.
I'm just wondering if that was higher because of that was CARES or COVID money?
The CARES Act, yes, definitely, because that was four hundred and thirty-something thousand um, there.
So we're not looking to allocate that portion out?
No, no, no. So yeah, the prior year funds, you had just over sixty-eight thousand in CDBG remaining at September thirtieth. Home was four hundred and sixty-two. Three hundred and fifty of that's allocated to the homeless project over on Brown Avenue, so that kinda gives you an idea. And then the CV funds, the coronavirus, that was a hundred and eighty-five thousand in our first round of what was carried over from the four-thirty-three.
Okay, and are those, the rest of that money, is that all getting allocated into the programs we've already designated, or are we looking at revamping what we're doing with the COVID money essentially?
Yeah. No, we're not looking at revamping, but on um, page, what page is it? On the page, on slide twenty-two, page, well, let me make sure it's the same over here.
The ongoing funding?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That outlines where that unspent amount of funds, how those have been allocated.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I have a question. Um, you put on, let's see, it's on slide twenty-three, Street Improvement Program. What determines what streets you improve?
We actually get a Request for Proposal from the Public Works Department. They determine what streets.
What, what determines your funding and our general budget funding? Okay, so the location would determine that there one point six miles was in a location set aside for this funding.
Yes.
And I would assume that's the same thing with sidewalks? All right, very good, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Member Robinson.
Yes, Terry, I see that uh, on your uh, first-time home buyers, I mean, I'm not excited that that uh, that's all you were able to spend. Um, is the entity down south still handling that for the city of Texas?
Yes, sir.
Uh, why is uh, are you're not uh, giving any more than uh, twenty-five percent of the purchase of the home? How are you doing that now for first-time home buyers?
Yeah, it's not uh, based on a percentage. What the, our third-party contractor does is they evaluate the household's income and what their purchase price that they can go and look for, what will be affordable to them. So they use the same lending practices as, you know, the thirty percent um, of their income. Um, the reason for the low amount is that's the entire home allocation we got last year went to first-time home, and it was spent. So that's just all the money we have.
Yeah, that's uh, that's, that's, that's pretty low for.
Yeah.
And from.
It averages about eighty-five, ninety thousand a year.
Correct, correct.
And we're cur- we're currently doing another program now.
Microphone.
Yep, you gotta press your button.
Sorry. We're currently doing another program now for this year. And I spoke with CHI, who does our program down south, and housing stock is the problem right now. We've got people in there doing applications and being, you know, qualified for it, but they can't find the houses at that price range.
Yeah, the home program puts a cap on the purchase price, which is currently two hundred thousand.
And you can't find anything uh, for two hundred thousand?
If you do, if you do, it needs a lot of work.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
All right, because when I, as I was reading this, and I said, wow, oh, we have gotten to that point, and our housing needs are continually escalating and uh, but I know housing cost is doing the, the same thing, so.
Yeah.
It's really a catch-twenty-two situation that we're in.
As we move forward with our five-year plan, and you'll also have this year your three-year plan for the ship program, um, you'll see some um, recommendations on funding for first-time home buyer in those as well.
Are you gonna be able to be able to merge the ship and the first-time home buyer?
I believe so.
Okay. What is the uh, normally length of uh, uh, of payback on that? What is the obligation period?
Yeah, it's averaging ten years right now.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I see no other questions. Wait, I see one now. Number four, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm number four, yeah.
Number four.
I, I, I actually, I need to be a little nostalgic, 'cause I couldn't believe what you just said to me, about two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand for existing.
For all of us, my Sarah who's up here, in nineteen-seventy-nine, when I came down here. I mean, I bought my first house in eighty-three, and it was forty-seven-five, and that was a twelve-hundred square foot house. And now we can't even, two hundred thousand dollars is a fixer-upper.
For existing, new constructions more than that, but most people are buying existing homes. Um, I'm hopeful with the trend, the market trends that HUD will reevaluate that for this coming year, and I think we'll see an increase in that amount.
Well, that, that's where I was going. I didn't know if we could do something to ask them to.
It's all based on data HUD. So I think once the data comes out on the home sales and what the market is in our, in our metropolitan area, that they'll raise that limits.
So on average, just a starter home is low three-hundred now?
Yeah, they're like two-fifty and up.
That is so crazy.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand how people can afford to buy a house.
Right. So I, like I had mentioned with our ship program in the coming next three years is maybe we'll have a um, activity or a program that allows not only the acquisition first-time home buyer assistance, but it will include some rehab aspect. So we can get those units that need repair for people to buy them.
Terry, uh, if I may, what is the uh, per square foot, it's about a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot now for construction?
I honestly don't know right off the top of my head. I think it's like one-fifty-five, between one-fifty-five and one-seventy, one-seventy, somewhere around there. I think it's like one fifty-five, between one fifty-five and one sixty, one seventy, somewhere around there.
Yeah, just so, you know, and I think you guys remember, maybe not Vice Mayor, I don't know yet. But during my time to speak last week at the end of the meeting, it wasn't a long meeting, I spoke to that problem, so it's not just you guys sitting here. And I can speak, you know, I use my sister as an example. You don't have to be unemployed or homeless or anything else. My sister's like a fifteen-year teacher, and she is in need of a, of housing.
Sure.
And she doesn't make the income to afford it, it's out of control.
Right.
And I noted, you know, kind of say it like it is for me, I live in Imperial Estates, and the houses they built for the space program in nineteen sixty-five, block house. I looked at a house around the block that's for rent, it's like twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. I would have thought about eight or nine hundred, but I'm clearly out of touch. But, and I said then, and I'll say again, it's a concern that I express, that I think we share, but I don't have any answers, and quite honestly, I don't think at our level of the city, we have any say. I do want people to know we're concerned.
Yeah, we may not have any say, like you, you know, HUD sets the regulations, but we can always develop programs that can help us get to where we need to be.
We always want to work on the homeless, for sure, but there's a whole nother group out there that, underhoused, is a good way of putting it.
Yeah.
I spoke to, I went by the homeless shelter, not the homeless shelter, where they keep them, go on Thursdays for showers, the community center over there. And I dropped in last week, and one of my former students is there, and quite honestly, there's a lot of my former students I see in there. And, you know, I said, where are you staying? We got in the conversation, she talked about how, and I won't even name the hotel, but one of our, you know, hotels in the downtown area. She said I stayed there Monday and Tuesday, and it was ninety dollars a night, a hundred and eighty dollars for two nights. And then she was back out. So the point I'm making is, what you're saying, what you're working hard on, what our city is working hard on where it can, we definitely, and it's not just us, it's everywhere. There's a housing issue. It's really, really outpriced itself, and even people who are twenty-year teachers, and I just say that because that's what I know.
Right.
Struggle to get into a house.
Absolutely.
So anyway, thank you for what you're trying to do. Any other questions now? Okay, I see none, thank you.
All right, we will move on. So as I mentioned, we will be preparing our next consolidated plan, which will govern how we develop our annual plans each year. These will be the strategies that we will keep in mind as we go through the process. I think we have five, there's three there, which talks about supportive services, also create suitable and affordable housing, infrastructure and neighborhood improvements, and enhance the safety and sustainability, and support those neighborhood-based organizations and groups to create community unity. This just gives you a snapshot of our grant history over the last ten years. You'll see that we had a considerable decline in funding, which started way before twelve thirteen, and we're slowly catching back up to where we were in the early two thousands. And so for next year, for twenty-two, twenty-three, we always start with our current allocation to give us our base of where we're estimating our allocation to be. It's been trending upwards, but not much, so we're going to hold steady at that as we go through the planning process. Again, that gives you an example of what the twenty percent for admin would look like, what our fifteen percent for public services would look like, and then the remainder balance for projects, infrastructure. For the home program, again, this is based on our current allocation. The county, we don't get the ten percent that we normally, that we could get, the county divisied up. So it comes out about eight percent that we've been getting. And then you see your set-asides there for your CHODO and housing programs. I'm including the home, excuse me, Home American Rescue Plan. This is a new grant that's going to be coming to Titusville. It's through HUD, it's really not a federal grant, but the, they're using the home grant to distribute these funds and the home regulations. These funds will be for affordable housing for the homeless. So you'll see that is a good chunk there that we're expected to receive. We do have some projects in mind. We don't have any details from the county yet. As soon as we get those, we'll be sharing that with council to get your feedback and advisability on what to do with those, those funds. All right, with that, if there's no questions, we can move on to our presentations tonight.
No questions, I don't see any, we're good, thank you, let's move on.
So our first presentation this evening will be with Aging Matters. Aging Matters is requesting twelve thousand dollars for next year.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members. My name is Craigad Minsen Wood, I'm the Program Director of Brevard Senior Nutrition at Aging Matters in Brevard, with a lead agency for senior services in Brevard County. As Program Director of Brevard Senior Nutrition, it's my pleasure, it's my honor, to lead the Brevard Community Kitchen, Seniors at Lunch Congregate Dining, which is twelve dining rooms that make up a location where our seniors can go and enjoy a hot nutritious meal each day, to keep them from becoming homebound. And of course, the third program is Meals on Wheels of Brevard County. These three business units come together to form the safety net on which so many of our seniors rely every day. Our request for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three year is for twelve thousand dollars. The Brevard Senior Nutrition Program is proposing to serve three thousand three hundred and thirty-three meals to twenty unduplicated clients, seniors here in the city of Titusville. Each individual is projected to receive one hundred and sixty-seven meals at three dollars each, an amount that supplements our Older American Act funding. Funds from the city of Titusville would be used only to purchase food and supplies. Administrative fees, salaries, fuel for trucks, et cetera, are covered by OAA funding and other resources. The daily food cost per program participant at Aging Matters is nearly nine dollars for the meal, and our federal funding is about five dollars. So the difference in that comes from other sources, just like CDBG. Projections through two thousand and thirty indicate that the population of age sixty-five and older is expected to increase by fifty-three percent in Brevard County, and the eighty-five-plus age group is projected to increase by sixty-nine percent, increasing demand for services such as Meals on Wheels and Seniors at Lunch. Aging Matters has been facing a growing waitlist already for our services, as the demand for services exceeds our ability to provide them. In two thousand and twenty-one, we served over two hundred clients here in Titusville. Those two hundred clients received over thirty-seven thousand meals through Meals on Wheels and Seniors at Lunch. With the demand skyrocketing, skyrocketing because of the pandemic, we're able to reduce the waitlist by more than fifty percent. The last time I had the pleasure to stand before this body was two years ago, at a CDBG presentation. Our waitlist at the time was over fifty people here in Titusville. I'm excited to say that just a few months ago, we actually eliminated the waitlist for services, for hungry seniors that, that were waiting for, for meals. We had no waitlist. With the spike of, of the recent strains of the virus, we've climbed back up to twenty in Titusville. But I'm incredibly proud of what we do here in this community. Other places in Brevard, the waitlist, we have probably close to four hundred people waiting, but we do a great job here. In North Brevard, including the city of Titusville, there are nineteen routes that, that we deliver home-delivered meals by about ninety-five drivers who volunteer each day, each week. They pick up food at the, that's prepared at our kitchen in Cocoa, and we orchestrate, orchestrate that from the Sears Town Mall right here in Titusville. Approximately ninety-three percent of the seniors that we serve here in Titusville meet the HUD income guidelines for very low income. The visit by, and some of you know, because I know many of you have delivered Meals on Wheels, but the visit by our volunteers for the homebound clients is often the only people they're going to see each day. A lot of times, it's the only meal they receive each day. When we say it's more than a meal, we, we mean that. If, if they're not responding, we make sure that we don't end our day until everyone is accounted for. And we can't do that without our amazing volunteers and without the relationship with Chief Lau and Titusville Police and Volunteer Watch, they're amazing. We are excited for the new year that's going to be coming up, to do a little bit of an expansion. We're hoping that our, our dining room here in Titusville will be opening back up next month. We're working with, trying to get the okay from the church over here, the AME Church, to make sure that we're good to go. So as soon as we can get that opened up as part of our, as our welcome back, we're going to, my mantra for all of my dining rooms in Brevard County is I want it to be a destination for their day. I want our seniors to have someplace to go each and every day, after all, the community dining room is in the community. So as part of that, we're going to be expanding services, starting with our Titusville dining room, to include more information about what's going on in the city. I, I think our application even, even highlights, one of the very first presentations and things that we're going to begin sharing is, is specifically related to, is that the, I got it here, equal housing presentation, the flowers, I think we actually already have them, the City of Titusville Social Services Fair Housing Series brochures that were made available. So we're excited to partner and continue that. So the measurable goals and outcome, goal number one, this program's going to serve twenty unduplicated clients with three thousand three hundred and thirty-three meals in the city of Titusville, with home-delivered meals as well as at Seniors at Lunch Congregate Dining. Goal number two, the participants for Meals on Wheels and Seniors at Lunch will feel less isolated and lonely. The outcome, sixty-five percent of these clients will self-report that they eat a more well-balanced meal because of participating in our programs. And by the way, in two thousand and twenty-one, the actual survey result of that was eighty-seven percent, one of our highest returns. Outcome number two, sixty percent of these clients will self-report that their meals provided have helped them improve their nutrition, and the actuals for two thousand and twenty-one surveys were eighty percent self-reported. And finally, a third outcome, sixty percent of the clients will self-report that they feel less lonely and isolated due to the daily visits from the volunteer through the participation at the dining room itself, and ninety-one percent was our actual report from the year before. Finally, this is a note, as some of you know, I love calling North Brevard my home. I'm so proud of what we do here, not just through Aging Matters and Brevard Senior Nutrition, but our partnership with The Chamber and getting meals from the farmer's market to our clients that eat it most, the partnership we have with Volunteer Watch and the police to make sure our clients are okay. But I'm proud to, and I can't articulate enough to people what it means to eliminate the waitlist, what that was for us to do, that's up here, nowhere else in Brevard County, we're able to pull that off, but thank you.
Hold up right there, and I always like to say this when you guys present, and that is, I can testify from my mother's life, who's passed away now, but her last several years, she was on Meals on Wheels until she couldn't be at home any longer. And again, like you, you made very clear, it's not just the meal, it's the hello, it's the how you doing, everything good? She knew everybody by first name, and if she didn't, she faked it. So it, you know, you, you speak of being proud of the effort you give. I can tell you that I too am very proud of the effort that you guys give, and the needs you fill are numerous. We could probably get five or ten or fifteen or twenty of them. So I appreciate you very much, and, Member Stokoe. Okay, very good.
Craig, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's saying you have twenty-two Titusville residents on the waitlist.
Yes, ma'am.
So why not ask for this to cover twenty-two people?
So, so, so the.
Then we wouldn't have a waitlist.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? So the, frequently, what we find out is waitlist is determined not just financially, but also through having the delivery mechanism in place. And with the spike of COVID, we can have the meals at the kitchen, but sometimes we have to be able to get them to the people, so it's not always about the money. And I think when you start putting in, the degree of difficulty goes up exponentially when you try to break that down. Whenever, usually, I've got a whole bunch of speeches where I like asking for bushel barrels full of money. I'm always happy to do that if anybody ever wants to listen. But in this situation, I think we do a pretty good job of showing our work and accounting to our obligations to the city of Titusville, and even just going, I mean, we've been at ten thousand dollars for years, and this is the first time we've ever even increased that, so.
So, second question, how often do you see these residents?
So we see, we see our clients every day, every week, when we're delivering those meals. You know, my heart is, is with our dining rooms as well, because those, those are the seniors we're trying to keep active.
Yeah.
And until we can reopen that dining room at the church and get them there and active and playing bingo every day and engaging and staying sharp and focused, I can tell you during the pandemic, when I go to all the dining rooms and we're handing out, like here in Titusville, boxes of frozen food, which isn't our product, that we're not making at the kitchen, no offense to Food with Karen Orlando, but we're meeting our obligations to make sure that people are getting fed. But that's not our, that's, that's not what we do, that's not part of the National Lunch Program. So we're, we're interacting with them, our folks, our site managers, our area supervisors, our staff are checking in on them, doing reassurance calls, making sure they're active and engaged and doing okay.
Okay, thank you.
Member Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing to me that, you know, we live our lives, and you come up here and you tell us what you're doing here, and it, it touches me so, because we're doing okay, but there are so many people out there who, I mean, you're talking about the simplest thing, it's a, it's a meal, three meals a day. I had the pleasure of serving some, I went on the Meals on Wheel thing, and I just wanted to take everybody home with me.
Right.
Yeah, because they're, they're so loving and they're so appreciative, because food is important, you know, it's very important. And I like the fact, and, you know, we got to be real careful, but I like the fact that we're trying to get them in a social environment, because, you know, mental illness is, is real. And if you don't have anybody to talk to, and it's just something about talking to people around a dinner table that make you feel whole again. So I really appreciate you, Councilwoman Nelson actually asked a question I wanted to ask, because I really would like for no one to, to starve or not have a meal, but I understand you got to have resources in order to serve, so it's no need for you to ask for more and not serve. So I appreciate that for sure, I wish it was something that we could do to make sure you had the resources so no one would go hungry. So I appreciate your service, and I appreciate your enthusiasm with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right then, we're good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Brevard Alzheimer's, and they have requested five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Sean Otle, I'm with the Brevard Professor Alzheimer's Foundation, Safe Ride Program, and Joe's Club. Our main program is our adult daycare, but our second biggest program is our Safe Ride Program. So we're here today asking for five thousand dollars to help with transportation costs, no capital, just operating expenses. If you look through the little bullet point here, five, the, the five thousand dollars we're asking for will cover about eight hundred one-way trips, it'll balance out. We do a match between United Way and FDOT as well. We own all of our vehicles, we have the second-largest paratransit unit outside of Spacex Area Transit, and transportation is a huge issue countywide, definitely in Titusville as well. Titusville alone, we covered about thirty-two thousand miles last year, transporting clients to doctor, doctor's visits, grocery runs, to and from our daycare service. So it, it's a, it's a much-needed need. We've been approached by Parish in the past as well, to kind of help with them as far as getting their patients to. We've been approached by parish in the past as well to kind of help with them as far as getting their patients to to the hospital, to other health centers and things like that, because they were constantly canceling appointments because they, people had no way to get to their appointments. So they were constantly, you know, having to cancel, reschedule, cancel, reschedule. And there's only so much even we can do, and SCAD as well. SCAD's overburdened. And for transportation services that are like for-profit, that can run somebody upwards of $150 depending on the trip and how long they're waiting for them, for that, for whatever visit they're doing. If it's, you know, lab work or something that they're having to sit there and wait, you know, that just racks up their bill. For us, you know, because of our fleet that we own and our relationship with DOT, we are able to, you know, provide those services free of charge. But on a, you know, of course, limited scale, so it depends on, you know, how much money that we get from other sources, like the CDBG grants. So it's a little breakdown. The, you know, average driver's salary is about 1260. Average cost to run a van each day is about forty bucks. You know, fuel is constantly going up. We do have a contract with the county, so that helps keep our fuel cost down a little bit, but, you know, even that's going up. Average trip is about an hour and about twenty-five miles, you know, round trip and so forth. Most of our vehicles are actually based out of our Melbourne office. We do have two up here at our Joe's Club here as well. But, you know, to transport somebody, we have lift vans, we have regular vehicles, you know, smaller vehicles as well, so we can pick up people that need wheelchair-accessible vehicles to take them to appointments. And so the unit rate that we're asking is about 550 a unit rate per trip. That also, we also deliver a lot of meals as well through the pandemic. One program that we started was a food, food delivery program as well. We second, we partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank. And every month we deliver about three hundred, three hundred boxes of food to people all over the county, forty, about forty people here in Titusville alone. We also deliver weekly to other people in the county as well. So that's something, a program that we'd like, also like to duplicate in the Titusville area as well, because that is something that we're, I'm sure Aging Matters can attest to. You know, food is a big issue. But transportation is, it's our second biggest program outside of our adult daycare. And it's a much-needed cause.
Thank you very much. And I hate to keep using my family and my mom, but she also had Alzheimer's. And she was at Joe's Club a lot. But one reason she couldn't go to Joe's Club sometimes was we didn't have the transportation. And this was back maybe before you guys were going, or maybe we just didn't know about it. But, you know, in those days when all the siblings and all of her kids work, it's hard to deal with that. And, you know, so that looks like a tremendous service. And to get them out and to have some semblance of normal life. And I can tell you, for her, when we could get her to Joe's Club, certainly there's no cure. But certainly things were more normal for her, and it was just really special to see her laugh and have that interaction. So again, thank you for standing up here and being part of what you're doing here. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm not understanding your ask.
Okay.
It just seems low to me. So I'm trying to understand exactly, I mean, it may be fine is what you're asking, but you're talking about a driver's salary of 1260. That's like $26,000 a year. What is your annual budget total?
Our annual operating budget?
Yeah.
For, for all three, all three of our centers and programs is roughly, I think, two, 2.6?
Okay. So your, your $5,000 is for one, what are you doing?
No, so yeah, so it's specifically for the Titusville area. And it's to provide transportation for, like I said, doctors' runs, medical things. And the way we come up with the unit rate of 555 is because we also match that with our DOT grants and our United Way grants and other resources as well. So it's not just 555 for one, one trip. It, you know, it calculates out to, I think, roughly between $35, around that.
Okay, and you said it was one-way trip is what you calculated?
Eight hundred one-way trips, correct. So from home to the doctor, and then it'd be four hundred round trips. But not everyone necessarily needs a round trip, so we have to calculate it by, by one way.
Okay, so you're comfortable with this number you asked for?
Yes, sir. This is also a first you're asking, so we wanted to kind of bear foot more. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Member Nelson.
Okay, curiosity. How many clients do you have at Joe's Club on an average day?
On an average day, right now at our Titusville Center, we have anywhere from like seventeen to twenty.
Okay, and pre-COVID, is the number?
Pre-COVID was between twenty, twenty and thirty. It definitely went up, or went down after, after COVID hit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I see none. Thank you so much. I keep for everything.
All right, next we have Catholic Charities. They are asking for $25,200.
Good evening. I'm Rosa Reich. I'm the Lead Case Manager for Catholic Charities in Central Florida in Brevard County. As she stated, we're asking for $25,200 for this coming year. Our intention is to serve about seventeen households per, for the year that are residents of Titusville. We do have an office in North Cocoa, kind of the Port St. John area at Blessed Segments. We also will have office space at Harry T. Moore Social Services Center. Our goal is to provide not just assistance with rent and utilities for people who are hurting, but also case management. We look at sustainability. Can you keep that rent going? You just spoke earlier about how unaffordable housing is. So we try to work with families and individuals. We budget with them. Where can you cut? Where can you save? Do you need training? Connecting them with a career source, perhaps they can get, improve their job situation, education, anything like that. So the funding that we're looking at is to provide average monthly rent, $1,200. I know we were talking about $2,000. But a lot of the clients that we deal with, also the low-income, are currently in housing that we've been still seeing in the Titusville area around 1,100 to 1,200. It's hard to find. And I will tell you, a lot of our clients are not in the best of housing situations, and we, and we know that. That's why their housing is still kind of on the lower end. We understand utility costs have gone up, so we plan to assist also with the utility costs. We currently run a similar program down in Palm Bay with their CDBG funds right now. So we're modeling it after that same type program. And so while we have office space one day a week up here, probably about seventy percent of our preliminary work with people are over the phone. So even the residents of Titusville, it's not face-to-face. We pre-qualify them, we ask them for certain documents. So when we meet with them, a lot of things are prepared and we can go through with it. We ask, for example, pay stubs, bank statements, birth certificates of children, those are the type of regular documentations we ask. You ask, why are we to get into bank statements? Well, that's where we find out where their budgets go. We're here to help people that have had an emergency, and we understand sometimes people don't understand how to budget. But the key thing is we look through it and we work with them. Where can you cut out? Let's be honest, a lot of people are not familiar with budgeting, how to save money, how we are in the society that all of our radio and TV ads and internet ads said, spend money, spend money, spend money. And unfortunately, some of our clients get caught up in that situation. So we're just asking for $25,200 of the CDBG funds, and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you very much. Any questions up here? Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am? Let's go with Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to understand, so we're at, you're saying seventeen households? So how do you divide?
Okay, so we do apologize if we did not bring enough handout. So roughly five clients will be assisted with two months of rent. And then two clients with two months, I mean, and two of those clients with one month of rent. I'm looking at the budget that was set up. Some people may just get utility costs also. They won't be just getting rent. Sometimes people come to us, oh, I can't pay my electric bill, but they could pay the rent. And some of them might be homeowners. They, they don't need the rent paid. They may already owned, like their trailer, free and clear, but we will pay their utility bill. And then some clients might just need one month's rent. So what she calculated was roughly five clients might need two months' rent and and six clients will need one month's rent. And then several, and then two, four clients will need utility assistance. So that would have been in the application that was submitted. I don't know, did they get a copy, Terry? I don't know. No, okay. Okay, sorry, we did not make copies of this because we assumed there was a copy. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Careful about assumptions.
So this sounds like you have a puzzle to put together every month of who needs what.
Exactly, and we've been doing this for years. I've been doing this for seven years for Catholic charities. And, yeah, so every client is met at their level, at their needs. We don't have a cookie cutter program because it's not appropriate. So when they come to meet with us, we sit down, we listen to their story, how they got to the situation. And, and we look at everything that they have, and we give them the appropriate referrals and services they need. Not only do they, we help them with the rent, but we will do follow-up also. We will monitor them. To be honest with you, we will try calling, emailing, and unfortunately, a lot of times, once the rent's paid the landlord, they ignore our calls. I've had them call me back or text me, who are you? Why are you bothering me? You signed a paper saying we'll follow up.
They probably have a lot of that going on. Where do they meet with you at? Where are you guys located?
Well, we're at Blessed Segments Catholic Church in North Cocoa. Actually, we're in the county part. And then we are co-located also up here at the Harry T. Moore Social Services Center. And, but not only that, if a client cannot get to any of the locations, we're unique in social services. Not too many other agencies will travel to meet with the clients at other locations. We've met clients at libraries, churches, doesn't have to be a Catholic church, if we can get a partner church to let us use their meeting room. So if they're living in a certain area of Titusville that they cannot, and they are transportation disadvantaged, we will try to find a public location because for safety, for the case manager, of course. We will not visit anybody in their home the first time, again, because of safety issues if possible. But most other agencies require the client to come to their office to meet with them. We will at least try to find something close to where they're at to meet with them.
And obviously, them getting to you is very important, is why I asked that question. There could be some people in great need, but just have run out of options of how to get anywhere. And we have a setup in Harry T. Moore Center with this group?
Yes, they, they do share an office, I believe, with Community of Hope.
On a regular basis, or?
One day a week?
Right now, it's one day a week, but Dr. Drew Warren has told us that we can use it more often. They're not using it every day either. And how we set up appointments, we're not one of, we don't say, okay, we are only meeting people on Wednesdays. If somebody calls and says, my day off is Tuesday, even though our day up there appears Wednesday, we will confirm with the schedule and we'll come up here and meet with them on that Tuesday. We are flexible enough. We will meet the client the time and period that they need us.
I have no doubt you will. I know Terry well enough to know she will, and it will get done. I just always get concerned when I hear, well, where's your office? In Cocoa. And we're at the Titusville City Council trying to help the Titusville people, so I just need to know that they're not having any problem. And getting to Cocoa is not real possible for a lot of people.
Abs, you're absolutely correct, and we will meet here. We've had clients in the past, even before we had this agreement, that lived here in Titusville, had no transportation. And they allowed me to use that office up here to meet with them.
Sounds like you're very aware of that and you deal with it very well. Thank you. Member Nelson.
So I'm curious, you have a case manager that's trying to help these people. How long does that case manager stay with that family?
As long as they need us. I mean, we, we don't, our federal grants we currently work with, we do a minimum of six months. But what happens with a lot of clients is once we meet that requirement, the door is always open. We say, hey, right now, we don't need to actively meet with you any longer. However, this is our, we provide personal cell, well, work cellphone numbers. So they don't just call an office. Once they're assigned to a case manager, they have a cellphone number to text and call and an email. And we, and once that case is done, we keep the door open saying, please call us back if anything else happens. We want to know. We want to help you. So we all, we don't just say, oh, you're done, and here it is.
Okay, I don't want to sound crabby.
Not you.
I'm usually not crabby.
Let's see.
Don't smile when I say that. But I guess my, my concern is, you give these people money. Are you able to then work with them, or do they just disappear?
We work with them. One of the requirements we have is we have to also see that they have a one-year lease. We don't like to work with month-to-month, because if we pay this month's rent, they may disappear next month. They may pack up and move. So we look at how long their lease is. We talk to their landlord. We also confirm if they're employed. We do third-party verification of their employment. We look for paychecks. So we're looking at, can you sustain this housing once we help you catch up? What was the emergency?
Okay, because I, I just have this fear of you go in and pay that month's rent, and they go, sayonara.
And does that happen?
I don't want, I don't want any help. I'm fine. Go away.
On occasion, that does happen. I'll be honest with you. I mean, it, it's the nature of this business, unfortunately. But I will tell you, we put in so much case manager at the front end. So if something like that happens, we provide them with a list of ways to save money. We have a handout. We require them to do a budget and expect them to show it to us. And again, we look through their pay stubs, and we work with the budget. And if they don't have enough income to pay the rent, we may turn them down, saying, you've got to show us that you can pay your rent going forward. Because what's the use of us paying last two months' rent, and they can't pay next month's rent?
Right.
And we do turn down people. And, and they get very upset with us. Those of us who work in social services know how that goes. And, but, and it does sound kind of like tough love, but the idea is, if you're not employed today, get employment. You can just come to us with a hire letter and, and an employer that we can confirm that you're now going to be working, even before your first paycheck hits the bank account, because we know that it takes time. But we will call that employer. We will confirm that they have a job lined up. Because we want to know you can pay next month's bills without any further help.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
There's a button down there somewhere.
Yes, on.
Oh, you're the one who's, I don't, I have nothing here, so go ahead, sir.
As Rosie, hello. I know that you and I have been working together for the last twenty-two years, so I understand your program. Understand that it is a lot of case management involved, and that every day, every client is different. But what I do want to know is that, are you serving the low or extremely low income?
Absolutely. Currently, we are using Emergency Solutions Grant Funding and TANF Funding, which requires clients to be thirty percent and below the area median income, extremely low. In the city of Palm Bay, their CDBG grant, we go up to eighty percent. That's the highest we've ever done in area median income. TANF allows us fifty percent. But we are very well experienced with the low and extremely low income clientele.
So all of the dollars that you're getting in this area, in the city of Titusville, are going to go? Are you matching those dollars? Are you mixing eighty percent with thirty percent? Or you just using that as a criteria of thirty percent?
It's whatever the CDBG standards, we will discuss it with, should we be fortunate enough to be awarded the funding, we would work with Terry on the area median income she wants us to work with. We will work within the CDBG guidelines. And as I said, normally, we've never worked above fifty percent, but the city of Palm Bay has us up to eighty percent.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty high.
Yeah.
Very high. All right, that's, that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? I see none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our last applicant this evening is Brevard Women's Center. They are asking for $16,300.
Hey there. My name is Becky. Just want to say thanks for being such good partners over the last years. In the last fiscal year, 2021, with your help, we were able to serve over ten, twelve-hundred clients with over 10,000 services. All of these clients were victims of violence. The services that were provided were shelter in our safe house, crisis counseling, sorry, I brought this for
No worries.
A letter that one of our advocates had sent to me for tonight. Advocacy, working our crisis hotlines, and assistance with injunctions, injunctions for protection and safety planning, types of things like that. The Women's Center has been here since 1975. And I'm sure like you, we believe that no victim of violence should be without care and support. They need to heal and live a life of safety and have a safe environment for their family. We've been here in Titusville since 2010. We have strong partnerships, of course, with the city, parish medical. Have a good relationship with Chief Lau and the police department. have a good relationship with Chief Lau and the police department. He was actually at one of our, our latest, our latest and only fundraising event that we've had for a while, as was Mr. Joe. And it's interesting how different perspectives upon the same subject come out. You know, we're always so happy for the police to be around, well, he expressed at that meeting how, how good it is for him and his staff, it is to know when they go on a call, that they can give someone our number and refer them to us, and if they're in imminent danger, come to our safe house. How good that makes them feel at night, that, night or day, that they've helped someone and they've got a resource to go to. So it was really, it was really nice to hear, and it was something I had never thought of from their end. The continued need is, is still around, unfortunately. The Uniform Crime Report from FDLE from 2020 showed that there were 430 domestic violence-related arrests in Titusville. That included a murder, six rapes, 82 aggravated assaults, and then other simple assaults, stalking, threat and intimidation. Our safe house and then our advocacy services are much needed for women, men, and children in imminent danger. And 2021 has continued to be another tough year for clients with COVID. And that's what the letter was, that I brought on my phone in case I forgot part of it, but our advocates are still seeing increase in severity of, of abuse. A lot of the reason is because people aren't, some people are still staying at home working, and so they're not missed at work. Their physical injuries aren't seen, because they're not, they're not going to a place of work. And then the financial stresses are still around, and being around in the same, same scenario with your abuser can sometimes just exacerbate the problem, because you're not separated. So anyway, that's still what's going on that we see. At the Women's Center, we have our Victim Services Program for Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, we are the certified sexual assault victim services provider for the county. We have intervention, bystander intervention programs on Eastern Florida State campuses. We hope to have a summer camp for middle school-aged girls again this year, and we have a counseling program. Victims of violence can be seen free of charge, them and their children. And then we have our housing program, which is why I'm here tonight. We have two emergency safe houses, one here, one in Palm Bay, and then transitional safe housing, which is a longer program. Our program here is for people who are in imminent danger and need to get out of a situation and maybe don't have family around that they can go to, or friends that they can go to, and still be safe. And when people are in our, our safe house, not only do they get that safety, but they get services to help them plan for what's going to happen next, what are they going to do next? A lot of times, people come and they're, they haven't worked. And so, you know, they might need a little bit of time of stabilization before they can go. A typical stay is about a month long, some people are there just a couple days, you know, till they can secure, you know, a loved one's help. But some people have to really take some time to just get things in order and find a new way to go on. We follow up with our clients at three, six, and 12 months, like Rosa was saying, and so many other people were saying, how case management is so important. And our advocates are so, so important, you know, they're not a tangible, you know, item that we can, you know, say we gave this many of this and this many of that. But their help is just immeasurable, because the, the information and lessons that they're giving our clients is just invaluable. And I just looked up our data for the past year. And our clients that were surveyed, we call them at three and six, three, six, 12 months after they leave. And at 12 months, 85% of those clients said that they had not returned to their abuser and were living without violence. So I just can't ask much more than that. Our request will go to help for operation utility expenses at the house, so electric, lawn, not water, because we don't build a city for water, things like that, small repairs, and a portion of it for some of our advocates that are there at the house each day. Do you have any questions?
Well, I just want to say, and I think everybody gets that tone, that you guys literally have a life-saving and a life-changing service. And your, your request is certainly reasonable, but it's one of those requests where it's, you know, this is one of those priceless things. You know, I don't know what they do if they don't have that. So again, and then you follow up, you know, three, six months a year, and so now there's lifetime guidance.
Absolutely.
I, I can't say enough, I mean, it's just, I'd love to say, and I think I said this about three years ago, I'd love to see that you weren't needed.
Yeah.
But that's absolutely not the case, and, and it's even probably worse now. I hadn't even thought of, not quick on that, but when you said people working from home, I hadn't thought about, there, no one, they don't go to work for people to see possible abuse and report possible abuse, et cetera, et cetera, that's, that's a big deal.
Yeah, I had, I had, you know, luckily, it had never even occurred to me that that, you know, was, was, was a thing.
Yeah, I hadn't either.
But, and, and one instance, it was even, you know, and, you know, like you were saying, it's, it's nice to, you know, you're okay, and then you hear these stories, and you're just like, good gosh. But a, a teacher, one of our county teachers, had just suffered abuse, like you can't even imagine, and just for like a long period of time, but it was then when, you know, we weren't going in, things were
Right, they were home for a long time.
Just
Well, your, your, your emotion and passion says it all, Vice Mayor.
I hate tonight, I want to be honest with you, I, I think it's because I don't like anybody to suffer, for sure, and I don't, you know, rather you don't have enough to eat, or, you know, you got a coward who is beating on a woman or a child, or vice versa, you know, sometimes the abuse happens with the wife beating on the husband also.
Yeah, and that, in that situation, we don't have, we can't, they can't go in our house here, but what we do is, we put them in a hotel, because it, because it does happen.
But it's, to me, it's just, it's just unfortunate that we have to have these organizations who have to ask for money, you know, it's, I don't know, I, if I had my way, I would just eliminate all of this, and we wouldn't have to go through it, but I appreciate what you're doing, I know you have to look at this every day, and I'm just listening to you.
Yeah, well, so, you know, I'm the grants manager, so I just, you know, I write and type numbers and add and subtract, but I tell you, our advocates, I don't know how, I don't know how they work with it every day, because it is, I'm not cut out for that, for sure, because it's, it's traumatic, it's traumatic work, and, you know, when you listen to them, they're, I'm so proud of them, because they, they're, they love their clients and they, you know, because we get some like direct financial assistance, where we can help a client do this and that, and they, you know, our advocates are just so excited to be able to help these people move on and get this and get that, and so I'm very proud of them, thank you for, for saying that, and I definitely will pass that on, because they do a good job.
The statistic about 430 arrests, that's, that's crazy, you know, it's just, it's too much going on, and, you know, there's a lot of pressure on a lot of people, for sure, but you know, unfortunately, humans tend to take out their frustration on the ones
Yeah.
they love the most, right? Or so-called love the most, for sure, so appreciate you being here, appreciate your empathy, you know, you may be the
Emotion, yeah, you may, you may need it. Not from that, though. It's got to be tough.
It's tough.
It's got to be tough, like you said, I couldn't do it either.
Yeah, well, I know one time when I, and we have a sexual assault program, and one time, our, our director that gives me the information was out. And so I had to gather everybody's stories, and I'm like, no, never again, unlike you, before you leave, you got to do that, because
One and done.
I can't, I can't, I'm not, I'm not cut out for going through all that information.
I am not sure who number six is, who's got a button push down, oh, there you go.
Yes, one of the things that the Vice Mayor says, that, you know, this is, this is a difficult task, and but one of the things that I learned in my little bit of experience, that every organization is not good at what you do. And that's why we're here to work through Terry and her staff, that they can do a lot of that evaluating, evaluating, so we only get the cream of the crop, so to speak, that comes before us, because if we just gave the money out, I know for a fact, you know, that everyone would be grabbing a handful, and many of those who grab will, would not be doing what they say, that, and I've worked with the Women's Center for 20-plus years, and I have a little bit of a different advantage of the council, but I love their heart, and they are truly community, community-driven. But all of you, and as I've stated, when I said, when I stood on that side, it's hard to make the decision on who to get what, because when you have the agencies that are doing what they say that they are going to do, you want to support them and you want to make sure that the city of Titus, city government is doing everything that they can to support them.
Amen.
Yeah, absolutely.
Remember Nelson?
I'm going to add this two cents in. Robert doesn't know this, one of my former jobs for 10 years was working with child abuse and sexual assault. And the way you have to look at it is, this is day one of the rest of their life. So if you're working with a kid that's six, seven years old, or an adult, this is the first day of the rest of their life. And your job is to make that, that life better. So that's what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
It's hard, though, sometimes.
Good way of looking at something like that, it really is, because it's got to be tough.
I don't know if I could go back to it.
It is, but it makes our own life think, you know what, I can handle that.
Clearly, you're making a difference every day. Any other questions or comments? I don't think we can say enough, quite honestly, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
We have no more agencies that have submitted an RFP, but we do have a next small presentation on our sidewalk improvement program from next year, for next year.
Yeah, I want to, I want to see, I want to see a movie.
It's real short, so we're familiar with our South Street Target area and where CDB funds can be utilized and presumed to meet all of CDBG requirements. So the Public Works Department this year has submitted a request for some infill sidewalk improvements, there's three streets that have been targeted in the South Street Target area. And this map, it may be kind of hard to see, but the yellow highlighted area is the proposed sidewalk improvements, which will include ADA improvements as well, curb cuts and sidewalks. And they are asking for, well, we have available 266,000 after you deduct all the other maximum levels for that program. And with that, I have nothing else.
That wasn't short, that wasn't a presentation, you can't call that a presentation. All right, City Manager.
Cards, sir, you can move to your next, which is petitions and requests of the public.
Okay.
Because there were no propositions before council.
All right, so we, we listen to these, and where do we go from there?
That's our presentation.
Okay, we're done with that, okay. Any cards on?
There's two cards.
Okay.
First one is Tony Shiffler.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
It's me again, 715 Tropic Street, the Norwood House Historic. This meeting is not exactly what I thought it was going to be, I'm in the South Street Target area in a home that was rehabbed, and I was reading the report for the CDBG grant for that area for the 2020 and 2021. And I just wanted to point out that 715 Tropic Street has been rehabbed and designated historic structure. We want to get that area noted on the map. It's the home of the historic African-American Business District and lots of residential homes there. And the Historic Preservation Board has applied for a grant, we'll find out March 1, if we get it, to actually identify, locate, and designate with signage in that area, but there's also a lot of other projects that are ongoing and that were proposed by the citizens of that area. The urban tree forestry and the urban tree canopy are major issues, they want to do tree plantings between the sidewalk and the streets and, and a lot of that area that's bounded by De Leon and north of Garden Street and further south down to, I believe, about Sycamore. And I just would urge council that when these various things come before you about the urban forest, about the tree planting, about sidewalk and street improvements, that you work with, work with these people who are trying to provide services, and you heard very specific services tonight, but there's things like, we're a very walkable neighborhood, and my husband wants art students or high school students to paint litter barrels that we can put out, but then we would need the city to pick them up, to empty them, you know, so there would be, that's sort of a project to be put into place, because people walk by, there's no place to throw their trash, they just throw it on the street, and then we have to go pick it up, and so I would just urge council to, as these various programs come before you, to consider how they all fit together and work with these agencies that have been here tonight, thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Terry, appreciate it. Next card.
Becky Limstrom.
Oh, see, she's a real follower. That's it. She's made a good point, we're good. Counsel, anything? Over here, anything? Good? All right, well, with that, very good meeting, you know, like Vice Mayor said, and I think we've all said that it's difficult to hear some of the stories, it's difficult to know of all the needs, but it's great to know we've got people out there meeting the needs, and where we can help, that's what we want to do. So thank you very much, meeting adjourned.